The contract, the only change is is the administration fee. So. We have talked to with the village about. Some of the charges with the. Fire. Um, contract and the police contract. And um, it was been talked about for since Sue Fries was here and that we were paying for the. Police Chief Services twice in the contract. They amended that and fixed that. But they also said that um. We believe that our administration fees are. Too low. So they um proposed the seven percent increase over a five year period um so much a year to get to that. We came back with a five percent. Increase. With the schedule over those five years and they accepted it. So it's up to us to now tonight to vote for this and um. Um, I guess I need to hear from you guys what you think of it and what any questions or?
I'm I'm in agreement. Uh, I think it was a fair. You know, we both gave a little and it was probably costing them more to administer at police services than what we were paying. So.
And we got a reduction in what we were paying.
Yeah.
Um, if you go to. Page six, there's administrative fee schedule. And there's a certain percentage. That would be charged each year. Is an increase to get to that five percent. So it's not one, one big charge and if five percent is shared between the village and the town. So our our actual, at the end of the day, our actual administrative fee will be two and a half percent. So um. I thought very fair, um, good negotiation and my um. As far as I'm concerned, I just want to make sure you guys are good with it and hopefully we can vote on it tonight. Good? No questions?
I just just want to make sure because this is really, really important for me. The chief of police position is remaining in the contract, right?
No, we we no, we cut the we cut his.
For me personally, that's the that's the most important issue. So uh.
No, we could never do that. But it was a it was a very fair negotiation and the village was very receptive. And um, there, I mean, let's face it, costs go up. Administrative costs go up and. And we just wanted. Our taxpayers, everyone wants a fair on track. So that's. So if we're good with that, we'll move on to.
Thank you to you and Chuck for negotiating that.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys, for your input. It was it was a good. With uh, negotiation all around. Next, we have the C S E A Town M O A for the well tender and fuel pump inspection. Agreement. And um. This agreement. Is so that we don't have to hire out. Firm out the inspections on the uh, gas wells that we have. And also, there's some duties um down at the highway garage as far as fuel tank inspection and record keeping. That um, we want to assign someone um permanently to do. And um, that has to be done, has it's important that we do it properly. So we have the M O U on this um. Agreement and is everyone read it? Everyone good with it? Yep, okay. And we'll put that on. Next, we have the health insurance contribution. And this is from Kathleen Moffett. Uh, the town's monthly contribution rates towards health insurance are set. Through two thousand twenty-three. She requests approval to set the two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five monthly rates is listed below. The rates are the same as the rates set in the union contract is voted in by the uh, town board. December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two and then uh, lists the contributions. So nothing has changed. We just have to uh, list it. Uh, any questions? You guys are easy tonight.
Yep, but quick question though. Um, yep. The it it goes through twenty twenty-four. Uh, did we uh, vote on a a three year contract or is there? Or is that something that if uh, the same um? Insurance, the same.
For the for the C E A, it's the same.
It's the same.
It's definitely the same. We try to. Keep everything the same between our non-union employees just. To make it fair for everyone. Okay, we'll go with that. Next, we have the employer policy update and this is lactation um, policy. And Valerie has put this together for us. Uh, New York State is expanding its lactation accommodation requirements. Which changes taken affect June seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And we were required to add uh, this to our existing policy. And she recommends that the new section number five oh seven of the new policy um, be added. And if you read through it, it's pretty much. Common sense. I don't need, I don't think I need to read through this to her. Are we good?
Do do we have a room set aside? Does it or we just we want to be available should the need arise? Is that kind of our position?
We don't have one exact room. It's just we'll, we could identify a room with a sign on door. Um, depending on what room is not being used.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yep. Good look. All right. The uh, change order for the pool project. Oh, by the way, uh, Chuck has excused tonight. He's on vacation. Uh, the pool change order. Number seven for Peyton Barlow Company. In the amount of six thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for additional roof sheeting needed to be placed, damaged roof sheeting on the community pool buildings. So when they go and do the roofs, we really don't know. What plywood is bad and what isn't until they get it ripped off. They found. Uh, this additional roof sheeting and obviously that's the time to replace it. So. Um, they they put in for their uh, work. A change order. Any questions on that?
Like where are we taking the funds from?
It's coming from the um. Airbus.
From Marpa?
Yep. It's everything where that project came from.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have to transfer anything? Do anything about that?
Oh, that would just go to Kathleen and she'll. She'll make the payment. Anybody else? All right, next is the rural outreach uh, pool use and this is from Chris. How you doing, Chris? Um, approvals requested to allow rural outreach to use the pool again this year for one. Uh, once a week during open hours from July tenth to August seventeenth for forty dollars a day. Rural Outreach expects to have approximately thirty children accompanied by several staff members attending. The pool will be already. Uh, fully staffed and to accommodate the members. Uh, do you need to add anything to that, Chris, or you did? We did this last year, I believe. Everything worked out perfectly.
Yeah, yeah, we did it last year. They were great.
Yep. We don't need any insurance or anything for uh. Cement like this?
Since the pool is already open.
Okay.
So.
Do the do the kids sign a waiver before they come in through rock or how does that work? Their parents?
None of they know.
They're paying, so it's almost like someone who would be. My regular resident coming in, correct? Said.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking like, so when I sign up, I have to sign all sorts of things that the town doesn't take liability? That may be something that we want to have the. Parents of the children also sign, even though they're not directly signing up. So that we have them covered.
We've been doing that for every single. Per diem person.
I would, I would think so, yeah.
Are you doing it just for uh, the the people who have a membership or a town resident or and you don't do it for the per diem though?
Right. Yeah, it's it's safer uh, for all our programs. They sign waivers.
But you said except the per diems.
I guess I would ask the town attorney.
Yeah, I you know what? I think that this is a good conversation to have with the insurance carrier to understand what they think that they're covering and what. Protective language they expect to see in place between the users of the pool. And the town. So um, is somebody. Chris, do you have a contact with the insurance carrier or does somebody within the administration?
We would. I mean, does this have to be voted on tonight? Or could we table this until we?
I, I mean, I think that we we can allow the program to go forward and just. Set a policy before it begins on July tenth and probably for all of them, just to make sure we've got our. Ducks in a row, I guess.
So we'll do a contingent upon uh, with our insurance company.
I mean, I would approve it and then just uh, you know, in order for them to be able for anybody, it would be our pool policy. That anybody who attends the pool, whether they're paying themselves or someone else is paying for them, has the same waiver language. I assume someone went through it when it was for paid people, right? That's not just, we didn't just make that up. So someone at some point had put that language in for a reason. And that it should just apply whatever we come up with to.
Okay.
Everybody.
So. And Chris, do you have any numbers about uh? Just rough numbers on uh, per diems last year, the year before, anything like that?
That was tougher in terms of um, you know, I know members for this year at seven hundred and seventy-five.
Wow.
Uh. In in terms of per diem. I I don't have that one on top.
Okay. So we could approve this and then I could have Kathleen um. Contact our insurance carrier to see if we need any kind of documentation. Would that be?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I think I assume there would not be a difference between depending on who was paying. That it would be the same language. For everyone attending.
Right.
So. I would, I would maybe suggest we take the language we currently have. And ask the insurance if that's sufficient and and then apply that.
And then just. Make sure that every, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little tricky if we have uh. Minors attending the pool without parents.
I think we should get the rock to get parental approval.
But but per diems.
Who who else would that be?
Thirteen year old kid who doesn't have a full membership is going with a friend.
Yeah, I I mean, I think we would want to, if if we need to be covered, we need to be covered and that's.
Well, let's let's talk to insurance.
Yeah. If that's the answer, then we probably want to do that, but we definitely want to do that. But if they're okay with. Without it. They're the ones that.
So, again, I think what we should do is. What the town attorney says, ask the insurance company and go under advice because they're the ones that are.
Yeah, we just, we just want to make sure we're covered. And if if we're co- covered with or without a waiver, then let's move forward and. We've got coverage, but if the insurance is covered. If the insurer says a condition of coverage is that we get these waivers, then we should probably look into that.
Yeah. By I guess by per diem, we're talking about just people who are who don't pay themselves to come in.
Or. It would be none, none members. Come in.
If they just pay a daily rate, no, we'll pass.
Yeah.
I mean, I get your point.
Yeah, I mean, if we need it, we need it, right?
Let's let her. The people that were paying the insurance company tell us if that's what we need or not. Okay, good. Next, we have the new program for rec. You want to talk about that, Chris, a little bit?
Uh, yeah, Dave uh. Kind of kind of approached us uh, thinking about doing something similar to our uh, holiday tour flights. Um, so he was. Gonna be uh, you just ask him for maybe some assistance, took the first signs. And uh, maybe having the recreation department and advertise uh, a tour of homes for for Halloween. So.
So we was. The rec department would be paying two hundred, but there's like, we're not recouping that. We're we're just, we're just fronting the money for.
No, but yeah, this would be maybe a one time fee or so. Uh, you know, he would take care of creating Q R codes, maps and things like that. Um, and he would be, you know, kind of assisting in terms of passing it out to those houses that choose to be on there.
Hmm.
And uh. Yeah.
Okay.
Nice.
I believe he does a great job of his.
He does.
Did you see the dragon he's building? Got a dragon, but no.
Really?
Also, one of the things might be, and I, we can talk to Dave, is that uh. There always seems to be a problem and he tries to address it with parking and the signs and things like that. The putting the information with a Q R code might be helpful. You know, if you're gonna park, park over here or something.
Oh, yeah.
Have it, have it on that info.
I can talk to him.
Everyone's good with that here. We'll go on to the bids for the highway Cadillac that they watched. Oh, he's mollying, so. Sorry, Dave. So Dave um, is put in for a new truck and I I know we have the bid results for your old one, but um, anything you want to?
Uh, no, it's just disappointed that there's no manufacturers putting out any kind of government discounts at all. So we're just paying. The regular price and not just that, there's just not a lot of interest from any of the dealers out there because there's a shortage still. So. I know there's just one bid, but it was bid legally and. I I think it's a fair price. Um, so.
Is this truck of it? This truck is available, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's ready, yeah.
Right, any questions from the board with Dave on that?
I deal smells. I guess not.
And the auction results. On Dave's old truck, they got twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah, and that's the good news. We only paid twenty-nine thousand for it three and a half years ago. So we actually. Had it for three and a half years and made money on it.
Isn't that amazing though? In three.
Yeah.
Years, how much the truck has gone up?
It's just, again, everything's out of whack. So. One bad news, but this is real good news. So maybe.
It is what it is.
I'm I am hearing contracts are starting to be talked about being let out the next year or so to get back to what it used to be. But until then, we're just at their mercy.
Yeah. And then we have the uh, six round plastic folding tables that Donna put on. For three hundred and thirty dollars.
Yes.
And uh, the minimum bid was three hundred and forty. I don't know if we should move on that for ten dollars, do you? Okay. So uh, everyone go with those bid results.
I I don't see the table one. Was that in the back here?
The what?
The table one, was that in the packet? Oh, okay.
We just got the results.
Gotcha. Okay, good enough.
So uh, I'm sorry, I thought you had this. So um. The truck was twenty-nine, two hundred. And the tables were three hundred and thirty dollars.
Gotcha, okay.
All right, next the Erie County Municipal Agreements uh. Your municipal agreements. Uh, this is from legislator. Melisakcy, Melisaksky, he is giving the uh, getting the town senior center awarded five thousand dollars. And it's gonna go towards furniture and supplies. And. For the Office of Aurora Town Historian. They're also getting five thousand dollars and um. Bob is uh, dedicated that towards furniture. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I do have a question. Um, that that these are, this is exceptional. It's really uh, excellent that our legislature is. Uh, do it. How, do you know how that came about? Was it a meeting with uh, Jim Moszewski? Was it uh? Just a a letter to him? Do you know how that how it happened?
Uh, as far as I know, they had.
A man from heaven?
They had a pool of money. Between all the legislators and uh. They were able to give out certain awards. Um, so. Um, they divvied it up and that where their pool of money came, I really don't know.
I mean, the the.
The taxpayers, yeah, it's right here.
No, I mean, right, right. But I meant how how was allocated uh, to senior center and to historian?
Uh, that's.
Not that it's a bad thing, but I mean, it's it's really great and love to see it happen again. So so he called and talked with you? Okay.
But the amount, I don't know. I mean, he's got a certain. Area that he represents and how he divvied it up. Um. That's, that's a very good question, actually. I I don't know.
Very appreciative and glad he did it, but.
So.
Jim is just looking at gift tours in the mouth.
Not at all, just uh.
I I think, I mean, from what I remember, Jim, the legislature apportion's a certain number to each. Legislator that they determine. I think that's how it works. They vote on it and each one gets that amount to. Dispersed to the.
I just divides it up amongst towns that you.
Yeah.
Represents and.
This happened before. I think this, this has happened before, right?
That's a good question. I'm gonna ask me.
Yeah.
My department got a bunch of money last fall from where you go.
Yeah. Yeah, you got the radio stuff, yeah, yeah.
You know why you got that certain amount though? I think that's Jim's question.
They called me and asked me if I needed anything and I pulled this together and he said. They put everybody, uh, legislators, put their proposals in and they all voted on.
Gotcha.
Put a certain pool of money.
Jim, we've got. Use it for, you know, doing regal for freezer in the kitchen and different things like that. Last time they called, say, you know, what he needs.
Did you give him the amount though, Donna?
Um, he's a. Five thousand is pretty much standard except for.
Right, get out. Right, I guess I I guess we don't know what. It varies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chris looks upset. He is not on that list. You gotta talk to our legislator, Mark.
Penny's from heaven. Okay. Next, we have a notice of public hearing for an open development area. This is. A public hearing that will take place, the town of Ruhr on the twenty-sixth day of June, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. At the Ruhr Municipal Center at five seventy-five Oakwood Avenue. And this is uh, for hearing on open development area proposed. From Bill and Mary Beth Putney for eighty-one Hyler Drive, East Row, New York. And the proposal is. In your uh, attachment. We've already sent this to the planning board, correct? So we just have to have a public hearing on it. So we'll have to set that uh, vote on setting that date. That's all I have for the work session unless.
Yeah, while we're on that, do we, where where do we want to, do we want to send that to Code Red to? Certain part of the town or townwide? Either drive, really.
The neighbors. Are the neighbors notified?
Mail them, we can, we can. Yep. Yeah, we we can additionally um. Which we have been doing, target that area. Draw a map, either everybody on that street. Or a certain amount of area around it that we then text or that's actually. Code Red's been getting some good feedback on Facebook, people just this um, with the closing of twenty-eight. We closed it down and everybody, um, not everybody, but certain, some people on there wrote they were happy to have received the message. Um, and then there's the Z B A stuff went out. And I think we have had some more people sign up because of the. What that generated, so.
We, I mean, we can, we 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 notify the neighbors and we put it in the paper as required by law. Um. I just want to make sure we're not. Overusing the code.
I mean, if something were happening on my street, even if I didn't really care about it. I would not be upset to receive a message that says that there will be a public hearing about something several doors down.
Good point.
And if I was, then I would.
I I'm not.
Unsubscribe, yeah.
As long as, yeah, I mean, what do you guys think?
I I I understand that if town wide would be.
No, no, not much.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you.
You can isolate that.
You just isolate it to the street and then you or a certain radius around. So probably the street and then whatever neighbors.
Yeah, we we code redded the um, Z B A meeting this coming up, but what you can do is you put in the address. Half mile radius. Bam.
So you did it.
Yeah, it's part of the policy, yeah. So um. So we can do this. We also have the Facebook page now too. So we have a lot of options and and both express, well, at least the Facebook page expressly. Says it's not the legal notification. It's just an additional notification.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, our legal notifications, obviously, the paper.
Yeah.
And then we also sent out letters because the paper is really all we have to do, Martha.
No one, no one reads those legal.
By law, I have to mail them to a budding property owners.
Okay, gotcha. So it's those two things. So anything else we do beyond that? But I understand you're concerned, Jim, too. You don't want to turn into a.
We don't, I don't, I mean, then the people can't say they weren't notified because how much more can you do?
Absolutely.
So it's probably not a bad idea. I just didn't want to over.
Yeah.
Use it to the fact that people are just gonna ignore it either.
Yeah, we did. We did a notification when Schoper was closed for a little bit. Um, I think Joe, you did one right when the, before the uh, chipping and milling.
Yeah, the chipping and milling.
Um, and so. I hesitate, but I don't think anybody's complained so far. So I think we're on a pretty good course, but if they do, let us know.
And you said you're like a a half mile radius?
Well, that's what we did for the Z B A because if you look at the map, it makes sense.
What is our, what is our policy, Martha? Just a budding.
So I mean, we, yeah, obviously, we're, this is above and beyond what we're obligated to do.
I suppose we're gonna do it. We should. Do it the same for everyone we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be half mile, then it should be half mile for everyone, or it's gonna be a quarter mile, whatever we do, we.
I think there's, there's certain situations that are, that warrant different, right? So if it's. Something on a street that's going to change, then you don't want to do the whole street, even if it's. You know, not within whatever parameters, so. But.
So, Joe, you got, you guys the ones have have done that. You you're the ones that.
Yeah, exactly. That was when we, when we approved uh, Code Rad. That was one of the permitted uses. So actually today, this meeting coming up on the Thursday, the tenth. No. Fifteen, thank you. Um, is the first one we used, we've notified. Of the of the uh. Z B A meeting coming up affecting a a specific property. So we'll see if we get any feedback on that, I guess, if people are like, oh, great, thanks for letting us know or. What's up with that?
We're paying for the service, why not?
Yeah, and again, so far we've had nothing but positive feedback um. On Facebook and and only and nothing to the email address and. I don't think I've seen any people unsubscribe, so. But maybe I just don't know where to look for that.
Okay. Um, does anybody have anything else adds to the work session before we do bonds for a regular meeting? If not. We'll start a regular meeting. Number one is public hearing, which we have done. Number two is. Approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Work session and meeting minutes. Do we have a motion? So moved, motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed and that's carried. Next, we have audience and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any items that are on the agenda. Does anyone? Want to address the board? Okay. We will move on. To unfinished business. And we have the Hyler Drive Open Development Area Set Public Hearing. And I need a motion to set the public hearing. Uh, for Hyler Drive. On the twenty-sixth day of June, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M at the Ruhr Municipal Center located at five seventy-five Oakwood Avenue, East Row, New York.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Jim. Do we want to add anything in there about putting it on? Or you guys would just do it?
I think we just do it. It's, yeah, not mandatory.
Any other questions? All in favor?
I.
Post. As carried. Next, we have the payment request. For uh, Elguer Construction for Senior Center Door Project. And they're requesting payment number three in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for materials and services. Rendered through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for the Senior Center Door Replacement Project. Funds will be dispersed from A six, seven, seven, two, that two oh one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion?
This was a grant, right? Or something. I believe we received this funding from somewhere else.
Any other questions? By the way, are they, how are the doors? Everything good?
The doors are doing well. Still waiting for them to uh, put in the handicap plot. I didn't talk to Kurt. I just recently, um, hopefully soon, this. It really is necessary, at least on the one year. So hopefully they'll get soon.
Good.
Was that work that was already supposed to be completed? Was it part of the uh? Price? Yeah.
Will there be another payment? Two more? So there's two more payments.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have new business. And if we could, I would like to add P, which is a budget transfer for Dave Gunner. And Q, which is a donation. To the senior center for Donna. Um, have a motion to add P and Q.
So moved.
Motion by Luke. Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Post. And that is carried. Next, we have the agreement between the village and the town. For the police uh, services. for the next five years going uh from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-eight with the changes in the administrative fees of, are on page six as listed. Uh, there are no other real changes in the policy. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Luke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion?
Just uh right in time for you to come back and join us to negotiate the next one.
I don't think so. Thank you anyway. Um, we've enjoyed a very good relationship with the village in the last few years and also um a great relationship with our police department and, and thank you Shane for, for everything you do, so. Um, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have the C S C A Town M O A with the well tender and uh gas. Uh, we denial therefore uh we resolve if town and the unit hereby stipulate and agree as fouls. Number one, the selection of employees to be trained for the uh to perform well tending and fuel pump inspection and reporting duties will be at the sole discretion of the town and shall not be subject to the requirements of section ten dash oh seven of the C B A for the grievance and arbitration process. Number two, employees select to be trained for the performed well tending duties and who are certified to perform and actually perform the fuel pump inspections and reporting will receive a stipend in the amount of fifty cents per hour for our, for all hours worked. And number three, the union shall not have exclusive jurisdiction over the well tending work or the fuel pump inspection and reporting work. The parties agree that in the future, the town may elect at its sole discretion to assign the well tending duties and the fuel pump inspection and reporting duties to town employees outside the bargaining unit or to uh contract with a third party company or individual to provide well tending services for the town wells and fuel pump inspection reporting services for the town fuel pumps. And four, the memorandum of agreement shall become effective as soon as the date it, it's signed both, both uh by both parties. And number five, the parties agree that any dispute or issue arising from the term of this memorandum of agreement shall be governed by the grievance procedure and the C B A. Do I have a motion to um authorize the supervisor to sign this agreement?
So moved.
Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion?
Just to say that I think it's fantastic, we're giving this work to our town employees rather than uh farming it out, it's a, it's a win-win.
And Davis selected some qualified personnel, so we're good. Yep, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have the health insurance contribution. This is from Kathleen Moffett. The town's monthly contribution rates towards health insurance are set to two thousand twenty-three. To request approval to set to two thousand twenty-four and tw- two thousand twenty-five monthly rates is listed below. These rates are the same as the rates set in the union contract is voted in by the town board twelfth, twelve, two thousand twenty-two. Do you need me to read the listed? Okay. Would you like to, to, I have a motion to uh prove as listed the contributions.
So moved.
Motion by uh Joe?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that is carried. And next, this is from Valerie from my office, this is new lacti- uh lactation policy. And she, we need approval to approve this new policy is, is for the New York State is expanding its lactation accommodation requirements with changes taking effect on June seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And we are required to add this to our existing policy, we recommend, we recommend adding this new section number of five dash zero seven to the new policy as listed. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, so moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussions?
A question I should have asked it earlier, um. Uh, it looks like the language is, is probably taken directly from the New York State language, um. Do we know that?
Some of it is, some of it is, and it's been approved by our labor, uh uh other triambra.
Perfect.
Yeah. So anything, when we do a policy like that, we go through the, the, the attorney.
Okay.
Good questions though.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Change order for the pool project. Please consider approving change order number seven for Peyton's Barlow in the amount of six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for additional roof sheeting needed to replace damaged roof sheeting on the community pool buildings. This is when they redid all the roofs, they found some extra plywood that had to be replaced. Uh, I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. We have F, the rural outreach pool use. Um. Rural outreach. Would like to use this pool once a week during the hours, open hours from June, July tenth to August seventeenth, and it costs forty dollars per day. And they expect, oh, thirty children accompanied, accompanied by several staff members attending. And we also have our own um people that are staffed. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion?
So we're gonna consult with our insurance folks and have them say they're covered because of what you already do, or we gotta get them to sign something?
Right.
Are the two possible outcomes?
We will send them an email tomorrow and see if they need any um waivers or um things that we're already doing for, for the regular members, right?
Right.
And uh.
We've been totally doing what you're going to recommend, but we just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want to make any extra work, but if they don't we'll see what they say.
Yeah, well, I, my reasoning is that there's some reason we have the waiver for people who pay themselves.
I mean, it makes sense.
Yeah.
Right, um.
But.
Any other discussion in this?
Nope.
Do we have a motion? Did I have a motion?
I think we already motioned seconded, right, or no?
Yeah, motion seconded.
Alright, that was the question to uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gotta keep track of that. Okay. The pickup truck uh bid results. Oh, I'm sorry, this, the recreation department, the new program. Um. This is a request from Chris for two hundred dollars for a program come out of A seven, one, four, zero, dot, four, four, zero, for proposed new town event called Spook EA. And this is for a holiday uh tour of homes, obviously during Halloween. And do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jim?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion?
So, well, this, this is happening in the village. So they probably have to approach the village for a use permit or, I'm assuming that someone at some point was gonna weigh in on the strategy here, if there's twenty homes doing this. Where are people gonna park and stuff, but that shouldn't really fall in our domain.
Correct, there could be talent as well.
Is it a special advantage?
Yeah, that's, that's the nature of my thinking. This could make it better, because it's not just the one spider, but if it brings in more people.
Potential to bring in more people and possibly cause issues at every site. Depending on where the sites are located.
Yeah. So they're probably, I mean.
The town roads, particularly, suited for drawing multiple cars to in the evening.
Yeah, so I mean, this is just approval to pay for some signs, but I think there needs to be some discussion about how it's gonna be handled.
Yeah, and the, the application to be a member, we should have, you know, subject to approval by the police chief and, you know, maybe.
They're going to apply so many neighbors on either the side of the street or across the street that approve of it. I mean, if you're gonna start advertising a house on Boys Road and, and maybe you have pictures of it on the website or whatever, you're, you're gonna draw attention to it and it, it's gonna, we, we deal with issues every winter, whether October, we deal with Oakwood and the spider, December, we deal with Boys Road and the neighbors, um.
We may, may want to do a walking route to instead and within the village only, but I, yeah.
I suggest them that we.
This is.
Sweet question. Should, should Chris call the village and see if we need to do a special use permit for that, or?
I don't think we do.
Well, Jimmy, even for the town's special event permit.
Well, for the town, we have one, I don't know if the village has one, do they?
Village has a temporary use permit.
They do?
They do.
But they don't, like, they don't make this.
Yes, Donna.
David's been at center working with people, maybe like monthly educating them how to build some of these designs and everything, so it might be bigger than.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern.
I mean.
Yeah.
Chris's idea, but if, if he's out teaching people how to do this, words gonna get around it, there's a bunch of great places in our town to go to and just come and explore.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it's something we want to say no to right now, but definitely need some.
We might eat some, the lights only go on and if they end at a certain time and blah, 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 all the same things we've done for other situations like that. I think it's a great thing to promote, but there's gonna be issues that.
We can approve the two hundred dollars, but there, there's gonna be probably some more uh legwork to be done if they want to do it.
Yeah, I mean, currently for the, the holiday tour of homes supper, we don't do anything, let's kind of call it and say, hey, we would like to put our home on, and you know, this year we didn't have anyone, last year we had a bunch of homes that said that they wanted to be on a walking tour, but we didn't apply for any permits or anything like that.
No, and I was all on that side, the permitting side, that's a little different, people are buying tickets, they're parking, they're going into a house.
Oh, we're not, no, no, we're not selling tickets or anything. No, we just, all we do is create a, the holiday holiday.
No, it's for the holiday lights.
I, I just think that.
You're gonna be drawing crowds to maybe neighborhoods that never see crowds and people will flip out. If you have one up on Deepwood and all of a sudden there's fifty cars every night up on Deepwood, people may not appreciate that.
Well, this is different, I thought.
Well, we'll see how it works this year, I guess, right? You know, it might be helpful instead of uh, you know, uh, a thousand, yeah, I think it's a thousand people coming to two homes, you got a thousand, two thousand people coming to twenty.
Yes, no, I mean, I, I think there's, this is probably the worst time of the year to make this statement, but there are benefits to people coming into our town and spending money, but this is the worst week to say that in front of Chief Krieger, I, I appreciate that, but I, I think that we approved the two hundred dollars that Chris can work on the program and then iron out all of the issues, you know, maybe it won't work, but.
That's what I mean, it's an opportunity to iron out the issues rather than just having people show up when, you know.
Yeah, and this is a village issue, so let's not.
Or it's not, but we could, there could be a bunch of spots in the town, we don't know.
Yeah.
Not, I mean, I think this could be fairly deep. I, I couldn't tell you another.
Can we put Luke's house on the list right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So should we, I mean, should we, I'd be happy to be part of a committee. We, we meet with the village, do we get the, the chief involved and we say, look, what, what, what prob, potential problems are we anticipating? And how can we mitigate them now? Instead of having this conversation in November going, wow, that was crazy and.
And also look for ways that this could benefit the community if we are gonna go forward and do.
Yeah.
So many variables, um just location wise. If a house in the six hundred block of Center Street wants to put this enormous
Yep.
display on with music and you have to pull up in front, turn your radio on.
Yep.
On Center Street Hill, not the place to do it in the winter time. Uh, or anytime, because there's no shoulder at all there. Um. So maybe if you can, yeah, if you decided.
Yeah.
On that, what's in for it, if they're out there or not, by their location first, they're, you know.
Yeah. But not discouraging you, Donna, from attending the Halloween classes at all. Yeah, this.
And I'm sure Dave would be happy to be part of these discussions too, he's, he's a very civic minded individual and I'll, I'd be happy to approach him, and I think we should have a sit down before. Don't I you, before uh, you know, try and head it off, try and get some, some common sense strategy going on, but if people are already building these things. You know.
Yeah, but, but, you know, what, what, I think with this spider and with Boys Road.
Well, the other side of town.
Gets out, news reports on stuff.
Oh, it's. The news can't get here fast enough for a story like this.
Moms are teaching people how to do it, and there's twenty of them throughout the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, I, I don't know if we want to draw that much more attention to, you know, I don't.
What I'm saying is if, if, I mean, we can come to the class and talk to the people and find out where they live and just get ahead of it is all I'm thinking.
Christmas display.
Yeah.
Um.
But if we have a special event permit, which is in the town and they have a similar uh tool in the um, in the village. It did, it went great. We ended up working it out.
Take that better this year.
Yeah. Well, it's like, but the actual permitting process to be able to put up Christmas lights, I don't think will ever really stand as a port test, um, but. Yeah.
So we're not, but we're not talking about, you know, holding people's feet to the fire, we're saying, hey, look, we have some genuine concerns, how can we mitigate possible risk? I, I assume that the kind of person who, who's gonna decorate their house for the holidays will be like, oh, yeah, that makes sense, what can we do to prevent issues?
Well, I, I think it's. So I, I think we, we, we can, uh, Martha brings a big point, a good point here that this, this is a separate club that's requesting the money, which is not what I was thinking, we are approving recreation to use the funds, so this would have to be a town event. And I think that we have an application process, right, Joe, you'll figure this out as you go forward. There's an application process, and if someone doesn't play ball, they're not gonna be listed on the tour, right?
One solution.
I mean, you can't stop them from putting up Halloween decorations, but you could not put them on the map and have people drive by.
The two things we can do, we can either approve the two hundred dollars tonight, or we can table it and talk to the village and whatever and figure it out before we approve it and set this in motion.
Well, we're just creating a budget line item, right, or we're, we're setting aside potential funds tonight, I'm fine with approving the two hundred bucks for potential use.
But then I think.
But I think we need to be proactive about this, that, and I'd be happy, anybody else wants to join me, I'd be happy to uh, to have some conversations, okay?
Yeah.
All right, then, I need a motion to approve the two hundred dollars.
I, I. I did, I don't remember either, I don't remember.
Yeah, oh, we just have to vote?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Uh, we have some breaking news from our town attorney.
Luke, you'll like this, so will you, Chris, going backwards to the prior pool conversation about the rock visits, it turns out, according to the New York State General Obligations Law, that a great waivers uh with public pools are void and unenforceable as against public policy, so you will not be required to get waivers from the rock or anybody else to use the pool because they aren't worth the paper they're written on.
So we should probably just take them off the website then and when we sign up.
Yeah, uh, wh- when you get it, when you get around to it, that's general obligations law five dash three twenty-six.
So, uh, the open needs to con- contractor.
Correct.
Because like hiking on private property, yeah. Public property only pools.
Yeah, it's um, it's.
Is there an inherent waiver on private pools?
Well, owner and operator of any pool, gymnasium, place of amusement or recreation or similar establishment, so it doesn't say public. I guess that applies to the carnivals too.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Excellent work.
Next, we have the pickup truck bid results for the new pickup truck for Dave.
Who did the beep, 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 beep sound?
Was there, was there a question about who would do that?
Okay, the um new pickup truck for a hired parent was held on June eighth bid at ten A M, town clerk's office, only one bid uh was received. And it was from Westher Ford for fifty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-three cents. Um, I think we should take the power windows and air conditioning off for this, maybe we can see it soon. Um, any questions from Dave on this? If not, any motion to accept this bid?
So moved.
Motion from Luke?
Second.
Second from Joe, any discussion? All in favor.
All right.
Opposed and it is carried. And now we have the auction results, uh, for his 2002 Ram. And the bid was 2,000, $29,200 for his truck and uh, the tables from the six round plastic tables from the senior center were $330. Uh, do I have a motion to accept those bid results?
So moved.
Motion from Joe.
Second.
Second from Luke. Any discussion? All in favor. I opposed and it is carried. Next, we have the two uh, agreements for the senior center and the town historian from uh, legislator Mel Zaski for 5,000 each. Um, for furniture and supplies. We have a motion to approve.
Are we?
Yeah.
Was that yes?
Is this the contract that we're signing or? This is just the, yeah.
There's no signature page in it.
The agreement is.
So then I'll withdraw my motion and say authorize the supervisor to sign.
The same, which we don't have.
And it's with the county of Erie, not with the legislature, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Are you making the motion?
I I guess I can authorize the supervisor to sign one agreement with the county of Erie to receive $5,000 for the Aurora Town Historian. And another agreement with the county of Erie to receive $5,000 for the town of Aurora Senior Center?
Yes.
Second.
Second by, was it Joe? Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have some budget transfers for court fund. This is from Kathleen Moffett. Um, this here uh, budget transfers for court security officers. The correct overdraw and appropriation accounts. Um, and one was for 1,500 and one was for $2,520. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor? I.
I.
I proposed. And it is carried. Next, we have a budget amendment for Easter or baseball donation. And she, uh, requests that we record the $1,000 donation from a baseball for Diamond Dirt is approved on the May 22nd, 2023 town board meeting as follows. Increase revenue revenue line eight, two, seven, zero, five, dot, 200 donations to Easter or baseball supplies by $1,000 and increase appropriation line eight, seven, one, one, zero, dot, four, four, four parks and landscaping by and supplies by $1,000. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Now, I I was not, no.
Jim, Jim did it.
Jim, I'm sorry. Second.
Sure.
My Joe.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Um, which, oh, sorry. I'm in a discussion real quick.
Discussion, yeah.
Do we? Which fields are we putting new diamond dirt on? The all of them over there? How does that work? And we pay half, right? And they pay half?
Uh, we have in the past, but we didn't commit to half this year.
Yeah.
Our budget isn't that strong, so I was just gonna give them one, uh, single axle load worth a thousand dollars and ask them where they prefer to take it.
Okay.
Um, because, uh, this year with the buy-in of the new radios, we just, uh, didn't have a lot of extra money. Um, I was just gonna kind of wait and see how the summer went and if we did have money, see if we can match, but.
Okay. Do we? Do we get a donation? Are we expecting one from someone on West Falls too, or?
I haven't heard anything unless you have. I know last year they did and we did a major project for them and I hear rave reviews. They're no complaints this year. Of course, when there's no rain, that's pretty easy to not hear complaints.
Yeah.
So I, as far as I know, we're not getting anything, Luke. But I can buy more if you want to.
That was, but yeah, if they.
Yeah, I guess I was just gonna see how the summer goes. Um, and if we could afford to get them, you know, a thousand dollars worth ourselves for a full truckload, we would, but.
David, you've always managed that.
Yeah.
You just make it work, right?
Yeah, that's and and that's what I do, Luke. I just ask of which priority they have.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta remember last year, I think we invested like 15,000 in diamond dirt over there, wasn't it? A lot, yeah. I mean, no matter how much they 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 haven't gotten a lot, it's looking pretty good.
Yeah.
I mean, this year our priority was fixing up the pool, so we just didn't have a lot of time for baseball.
Right. Yeah, I was only asked because it seems like it's something that we get bombarded with all the time and.
I honestly didn't expect the check, so it's great. They're giving it to us. Cause I had told them that we weren't matching them this year, so I figured they would just wait till next year. And then, uh, with the budget coming up, uh, we'd be more back to normal. It was just that big radio purchase that we had to do for the whole fleet. Kind of wiped us out a little this winter, so.
Any other questions?
No.
Favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the early voting polling location lease agreement. And this is for $900 per election with County Berry. Um, early voting primary election, June 17th, 2023, June 25th, 2023. And the general election will be October 28th, 2003 and November two through November 5th, 2023. We have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign this agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Jim. All's all in favor?
I.
I opposed and it's carried. Next, we have a request from Donna to surplus a fax machine, which was purchased in 2001. What is a fax machine? Do we still use those? Okay. Uh, the old machine will be recycled, um, in Nepal with the electronic cycling. We have a motion.
So moved.
Listen by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion?
He always yelled at me last time because I moved and this time I didn't move and nobody did. Oh. I can't even hear you over there.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next, this is from Megan, tent from the recreation, uh, department. These are donations for the Independent Day Bands. Please accept the following donations to be used towards bands for the July 3rd Independence Day Celebration. Easter or Police Quaker Club, $200. Weaver Holdings LLC, $500 and Masters and Garden Center, $100. The funds will be deposited in eight, two, oh, eight, oh, one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And it is carried. Next, we have P and this is a budget transfer from Dave Gunner and this is for bridge labor. To be, um, changed to bridge material for the east film work construction of, uh, the East Filmar Bridge. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Looks like Jim.
Second.
Like my Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed as carried and this is a request from Donna to accept the donation of $100 from Krista Sheaton in memory of Dan Carroll. And has been a town resident for many years and recently passed away. Was a very nice active member of our center and would like the money to be placed in our TA 1,000 dot 90 account. Maybe a motion to accept.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And as Carrie is so weird when you don't have that fifth person here.
Yeah.
Cause you guys.
We're off and that's like who's moving and everything I.
Yeah.
So.
All right. Next, we have communication and reports. We have the May 2023 reports for senior center building department work, reputation, stock control, town clerk, town clerk tax, town clerk water, east rural police department and the supervisors report. We also had the New York's State D E C report on the giant hogweed eh, control in our, uh, majors park. And we also had a, uh, report from the Erie County proposal of the ambulance and paramedic training program. Did you all get? Uh, I we sent that out to you. Did you get a chance to read it?
Yeah, not cover to cover, but it was very, uh, there's a lot there. I'm gonna have to.
They, uh, did a nice discussion with us at our our last supervisors meeting and, um, it's very interesting, uh, we're gonna use. I'm not sure if they're using Aurora, but maybe Southwest is a pilot program. You know more about this Luke than I do, or?
Yeah, I I mean, I don't think anything has been 100% decided, but yeah, South Wales is the target.
They already have a couple of ambulances that they've purchased. There's some concerns that they have, um, with not wanting to infringe on, um, when with like, say, the village has an agreement with AMR. So they have to be careful that they're not jumping the gun. They want to make sure that AMR is not available, the backup's not available and they would be called. They also don't want to be stealing employees. That's another, uh, problem.
Yeah.
They're gonna be facing, but they're working on it and it's good news for a lot of the towns such as ours and and ones in south of us that don't have any ambulance service at all. So it's a good program. Um, we get a chance, read it through. There's a lot to it, so.
Yeah, I would I would add that it looks like Aurora will be, will continue to work with them.
Yeah.
Aurora will be a central part of that is of the plan. It's not like it's gonna be in Brant or something. Um, and then, you know, there there is need for it, right? Even this, uh, well, of course, Saturday was a special day, but we had some issues there where we could have used.
Yeah, and I mean, they have to have, there's so much to it. They gotta have agreements with, say, the town or the village. Where they're gonna park the ambulance.
Yeah.
You know, what what this, who's gonna dispatch it and there's so much involved. Uh, but they are working on it. They're doing a good job, so, uh, moving in the right direction. Uh, next business from board members and I'll start with Joe.
Oh, thanks. So, uh, the Open Space Committee came up with our trail markers. I distributed them per review to my fellow board members and I'm never doing that again. Bunch of critics here, but they're fantastic. And what's great about these is they're made by the high school students, the, um, Blue Devil Design, which I think just started this past year. Uh, they have great equipment and can do a lot of stuff in-house. So, uh, they're, I know they're darker in color, but that was deliberate because we don't want to be uh, clogging up the visuals of the, uh, park. It's really nice and the actual, on that topic, I think the Open Space Committee has identified the first two trails they want to, uh, mark and it's it's gonna be nice. It's, uh, it's gonna be neat to add to. I mean, we have the property, uh, people's and it's a little, was a little bit intimidating. Quite frankly, I never walked back there because I didn't know what what was there. And it turns out there's some well-established trails that are very nice and they overlook the marshland. And you're gonna be able to see the life cycle of that sort of that wetland that we that we are lucky to own and, uh, manage. Um, the other thing is I emceed U8 baseball for EA baseball the previous Friday night and I kept a particular, uh, watch on the bathrooms. We nailed it. They there was no backup. There were no lines, two bathrooms that night and it looked like they were as busy as they get. Did fantastic. There was occasionally somebody waiting for a bathroom, but it was, uh, it was good. And I made an announcement about the bathrooms that everybody seemed. What are you smiling about over there?
Are there any police complaints of a creepy guy outside the bathrooms?
Anyway, um, and I'm not west, it, uh, it was the West Falls meeting was Luke's baby, so I don't want to step on any toes there, but what did come up and something we're gonna have to discuss and, uh, you have, you guys have the historical knowledge. The DOT intends to put sidewalks in West Falls. I don't believe that we are dealing in the town. There's some decrepit sidewalks in West Falls, but we have no po- do we have a sidewalk policy? I guess it's a cut to the chase. Um, because we're gonna have sidewalks to deal with and and make a determination of who keeps them clear and blah, blah, blah.
We do not have a sidewalk code.
There you go.
Which is what you would need.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, these sidewalks probably won't be there till 2025, but just like with Halloween thing.
They're now, aren't they?
Well, they are, but that's a good point, but they're they're there, but they're almost not there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I had an actual, uh, and I a call from DOT that wants to talk to us about their project, but, uh, I put a call back into them and, um, they haven't responded yet. But I think they want to talk about some easements down in that area, which David, I'd like you to sit in on this meeting with me. Yeah.
Eh, we do own the sidewalks right either, Joe.
All the ones that are there?
Yeah. Okay, I asked. We don't have a code, but they are the towns.
The only sidewalks we have.
But we don't maintain.
Well, we.
Except.
We do have new sidewalks over at the South Wales. What they put in there, that turnaround thing.
Buck there too.
Okay. And Reed Hill, Reed Hill has sidewalks.
You don't, you don't shovel or.
We don't do any.
Yeah.
We've done that once.
Gotcha. Okay. So maybe we don't need it, but I just, I know the village has.
Be careful, that's all.
I think we, I think we need to at least look into it, what that is, right?
You don't want it. No, no.
Gotcha.
I think we do want to get into it because, uh, and we can maybe check the village, uh, as far as liabilities slip and fall. If it's a, if it's a town sidewalk and someone falls, um, then the liability is solely of the town. If there's a policy though that allow that requires a homeowner to clear their path and the homeowner can be a liable as well and can share some of the costs and the problems. So then we can have, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking at the general audience, Dave, I'm not looking at it. But it's not a matter of, of, it's not a matter of the 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 town having to plow it. It's just a matter of a liability issues.
No, it's all I had.
Thank you, Joe. Jim?
Uh, yeah, um, again, uh, attended the, uh, the West Falls, uh, advisory that was extremely well attended. Um, and, uh, had a lot of questions, uh, for the, especially for the DOT. And then, uh, some questions when it went back, uh, to the the second issue, maybe, uh, Luke can, uh, address, but, uh, I want to also talk about the West Falls parade. It's it's a little parade. It's a successful parade. Uh, we helped put that together. It's a fire hall that really does all the hard work, I think. And, uh, Jim Walzak gave a beautiful Memorial Day, uh, speech at the park at the end. Um, we took over the hot dogs and pop for uh, not necessarily from the fire hall, but for the fire hall. Uh, paid for it at Westfall Center for the Arts. There were, it was outdoors. It was probably about three times as many people that came afterwards and maybe because it was outside, maybe because it was such a beautiful day. But but that went really well and I think that's something that's gonna probably continue.
Good.
Look, um, uh, one thing Joe and I attended the opening of the Rock. Um, the the official opening of the Rock. It was also very well attended and a great, um, ceremony. And I think a lot of good things really happening out there. Um, the the really the town sort of thing is everything looks great. I don't think there's, you know, the fences up, the trees are up. And it doesn't look like it's too intrusive on on neighbors, what I would have to say, so. Um, but it was, it was a great event to attend. The West Falls meeting, yes, we got the DOT. The plans are not up online yet, but they are planning on doing a sidewalk on each side of the street, just so we know that with crosswalks. They mentioned one crosswalk at, um, Bridge Street to to go over, um, and maybe we want to have Shane look over the plans when they come up because there's going to be a comment period. Um, another, one of the rec, one of the suggestions was to have some sort of cross by the fire hall uh, art center as well. So we'll see what that is, but either way, the DOT is working with the community to come up with the best plan there. Um, and and thanks to Dave as well, a lot of lobbying to get them to really, uh, put the the monies into that stretch. In addition to the road, that point nine miles in Westfall is gonna get a lot of TLC. So it's great. Like, what do they say? They're lowering the road by six inches?
Yeah, so that, yeah, lowering the road by six inches. The other thing that came up is if any homeowners want to tie in to the drainage, they have to request, uh, a work permit through the DOT. And they'll, they'll create a a tie-in for the for the homeowners to tie into, but it won't be, they're gonna have to bubble up. It's gonna be a bubbler. They're gonna have to bubble up to it, so it's.
The homeowners got to pay for it too.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we have to to.
Lead up to it.
Yeah, they'll have to pay for their portion of it, but the DOT will will have a, what's the word I'm looking for? A box or whatever that they can, yeah, tie into.
Yeah.
But they have to, they have to request that and there's several homeowners there. Well, you're familiar with the one. It was, they're looking for, they're, they want to be gravity fed, but the guy from the DOT wasn't bending on that. Yeah, that was, that's what he said. And they said they, if they dug for that, they then now they're getting utilities and all kinds of stuff. That's just.
Yeah, and they also said that they would not be closing down any section of the street. So I mean, they'll have one way or whatever, but they're they're not going to be closing. So, I mean, they'll have one way or whatever, but they're they're not going to be closing down the street for any, any period of time. Um, and if there are any questions, it's Brian. He did want to, he he went to Colden after he was with us and he did want to come to the town board as well, so I expect we'll see him. When the design is a little bit further along. Um, and the design phase is supposed to be over in January twenty-four, so. Be this year that we'll talk about it. Um, then after that was the, it was a discussion about the New York Forward Grant, um, a lot of positive feedback. Uh, they want to do it again. We agreed in a couple of days to propose to the application committee to come out and take a tour of Westfall. So it'd be good. Hey Jim, if you could be there for that, we'll figure out. We we haven't set down a date yet, but sometime in July. Um, and uh, the unanimous decision to reapply when that comes up. Um, and the last is the Climate Smart Community Task Force. Just one issue we want to not kind of like go through the cracks. We do need to get a website of some sort. So however, we want to decide how to do that. Is it an advisory committee? Is it a committee, official committee? I don't know how we move forward on that, um, but that's something we can talk about. And then Scoot around June, which is not have any slow bike, slow roll, whatever those are. We do not do that. Um, I know there are somewhere out has nothing to do with this. Um, but uh, we think we've, we've now, it's uh, as of the tenth, I think we had about two hundred and fifty. Miles saved where people walked their bikes instead of driving and uh we're getting, you know, five or six new signups a day. Um, and we have quite a few sponsors and good sponsorships. Um, and seems like it's getting quite a bit of a, just as a reminder, this is the. Walk or bike to your, do your daily tasks instead of driving and you enter to do prizes, so. And there's a link tree up online and so it's it's going pretty well. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Um, I don't have a lot. I just was gonna ask. Um, if anyone's heard from the resident up on Hubbard about Hubbard Cabin. We're, we're, isn't gonna be a two week.
I, I saw her in the co-op. I spoke to her and I told her that we were waiting for the engineer report. So the engineer was busy and I said, well, we, you know, this is something we can talk about, but we need to to get that report, so.
I've had some emails, you know, you know, we questioned that, we take another look at it and I said. You know, there's a lot of ideas. I mean, what would, uh, are we, we put a replica of the building? You know, if if you had to tear it down, if they could, maybe Bosse's could, you know, do something if there was a fundraiser, but. But the actual building, I just don't see any way that could be saved. And it represents a public safety hazard, so um. We, we just need to make a decision pretty soon on what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah, it's, I I I feel for the 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 folks, all of them who say, oh, it's it's got some historic. We don't want to. We don't want something else old to be knocked down, but it's just, it was the other option to just sit here and wait for it to fall into the ground. I mean, it's. It seems like there's been plenty of time to, I mean, if somebody's gonna galvanize an effort, if somebody's gonna raise the funds to save this thing. Time is ticking.
I don't even know if you could save it.
Yeah, whatever, build another one.
Yeah, they really want to do that, but they'd have to raise some funds, but this one needs to be.
Yeah.
And it's been so, changed so much over the years anyway.
Sound it. From the outside, that porch is kind of cool again. The rest of it is just.
I, the only thing is, is there something to save on that building that I don't, I don't know what that would be, right? Is there something of historical value that can be saved and we would really need an engineer's report to do that?
Grab doesn't seem to think though, or historian doesn't.
Yeah.
But I I didn't know if anyone has heard anything or if we, you know, how long should we sit on this?
Well, I was expecting, I mean, the advertiser did an editorial on the shack. They had a story on the shack. It, no one's here.
Yeah.
You know, like it's, you gotta take, read something to that.
Well, it's, it's nice to have an idea, but this is going to cost funds and and there needs to be someone behind it. Or some organization that's going to, if if we want to have that conversation, even have the conversation. There needs to be someone or some organization behind it that's going to put funds into doing it. That's.
In the meantime, you have a, a potential hazard.
Absolutely.
I guess uh, we give it a little time, but we're gonna have to make a decision sooner or later.
We did make a decision.
I know Dave was busy right now, so.
But is it Ben? Did it get snow fenced off or anything yet?
You can't touch it until, you said they're gonna probably touch it till one? Okay.
I'll make sure.
Sure, so we could.
I mean, do we want to do a public hearing and that way we said we've done it and nobody will show up?
Well, either a public hearing, just put it on the agenda one of the nights.
It was on the agenda.
Why would you, why would you take a public hazard like that and put it on, do a public hearing on it? I mean, what what, what are you gonna benefit at?
Well, I, if.
But I think putting out the, you know, agenda might give it an end date as well.
I'll do whatever you guys want. It just.
I don't need a public hearing.
Yeah, I, I think we've, I I personally think we've, I mean, we're, we're here. Our ears are wide open. We, it's been advertised. It's been discussed. Anybody who wants to come forth with a plan, they're more than welcome to, but it's better be a plan. It better indemnify the town and and it better have some real concrete behind it, you know, that.
Fifteen yards. Is it two hundred?
I think we've, let's, let's then, let's go with that. I mean, we've made our decision. Dave's not gonna get till in August.
Yeah.
If someone comes forward before that time, we can think about it, but.
If, if you get a spare five minutes the next. Few weeks, if you can put some fencing around it. Yeah, I get it, I get it, but if we can fence, if we can at least fence it, I'd feel better. Liz, were you gonna say something? Like, okay, I thought.
The microphone was obvious. You weren't gonna say anything.
I guess still put a pipe in there as soon as I do that.
Yeah.
If somebody's gonna have a problem there. So as soon as I put the pipe in, people start getting nervous. We can't do nothing until we put a driveway back in.
Okay. Alright. Anything else on it? Alright. Next, we'll go to audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on any item whatsoever. Nobody? We don't, we don't sign your slip unless you address us. Staff reports, Chris. Pardon me? I can't hear you. Wrong night, right place, wrong night.
If there's a tree.
Yeah, so the the village, the village meeting is next week at this time in here.
Same, same building here.
Next Tuesday.
They're opposite Mondays.
Or Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday?
Monday.
Oh, Juneteenth. Juneteenth.
Oh, that's right. Chris, anything?
Full opens uh the weekend. We had a bunch of staff out there doing orientation, redoing the rescues and everything. Uh, like I said, we had just out of uh eight hundred members uh as of today. Uh, I, we've had multiple members come over and say, I'm happy that they have, that there are the new outdoor bathrooms. Um, so a lot less people are coming in to the uh indoor ones, the pool ones. Uh, we had Channel Seven out there. Uh, that did an interview with me in terms of opening pools. Uh, so it was nice and cool as great. Really gotta thank Dave and Mike Engel finger and Chuck for all the work they've done. It looks fantastic. Everything's running really well. Um, and I, you know, talked to you a little bit about this, we, we had our father-daughter dance the other day. Um, a little bit of spice with the that in terms of the month it is. It's also Father's Day coming up, so we're looking at possible uh another event to be a little more. All encompassing too for dancing, so that's all.
Donna?
There's new things. Actually, I was laughing when you talked about fax machine. Your county mandates that most of our stuff will be sent to a physical fax, that email is not secure. So, so we did get a fax machine for you, so um, it's interesting with the tables, the tables. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the the tables that we bought that we auctioned off were a little over three hundred dollars. Twenty-one years ago and now they're eight hundred dollars. So the last grant I got from the county legislature, it was a. A little under five thousand. That's what we did with those. Um, so it was great to get three something back. Um, but it's amazing the cost of those tables and they're six foot. They're, they're really nice tables, but um. Two other things, uh, Blue Devil Design, they did a sign for us with our hours on it in the office, they. About eighty-five dollars. They did a great job, so people should have tried to tell people they're out there, you know, give them a call and use them or look on. Look on the website and stuff, so they were great. The other thing is Friday, um, and I want to thank Bridget for doing a great job and. And getting our contract signed with the county. We're getting our new TV and laptop. Um, it's a seventy-three inch TV on a mobile cart. They asked us if we wanted an eighty-seven inch. I can't even imagine how you'd get through the doors. Um, and they're going to educate it uh us on how to use it, what to do. The laptop will be ours to use with the TV. Um, if groups come in, hopefully they can share it. It's gonna be an interactive. It's kind of a pilot. Um, Tosh Collins in South Buffalo, Chick DeWong in R Center are the three pilot ones, and so we'll see. We'll be able to zoom a program that they're having. Would it be nice because our audience participation will be available? Um, so we're not sure. Our staff will be there on Friday. Um, Nick will be there. Um, he's been very pleased with it. Um, he said it's, you know, it's the the future. So um, that, that we're, we're really excited, but we're a little scared of what it can do and what we need to be doing with it, so we'll see. Uh, but you know, Bridget, we talked and we went back and forth and got the contract signed and that was wonderful, so thank you. Um, so I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Shane?
Um, just a suggestion for the crosswalks, if the state wants to listen. Um, they do have solar lighted crosswalk signs. Um, if the state would want to pony up the money for that, um. In a rural area like that where you can drive for miles and not come across the crosswalk, it might be. Um, something to look into, um, especially with the curves and. Um, down there, something to draw the attention to people.
Yeah, somebody brought up lighting and they said it, the use doesn't justify it, but they weren't talking about, nobody brought up solar power.
Yeah.
So that might be an idea.
Yeah, I did, the, somebody was just looking into them and I think they're about two thousand dollars apiece. Um, so they're not cheap, but they're not some crazy amount either, so um, that would be something to look into. Then I'm still recovering from Saturday.
How was, uh, any trouble or?
Um, numerous first aids, people passing out. Um, we did have one gentleman get shoved coming off a bus. He fell and hit his head and has a fractured skull now. Um, but by the time we got there, the person that shoved him was gone and nobody knew who he was and we're still working on that. Um. A few fight calls that again, once we got to them, they were gone. Um, and then just the regular dealing with. People drinking all day. But it turned, this year was a little different. It seemed like a lot more people came out early. Um, and then there wasn't that big a crowd towards the end of the night. Um, and again, this is a second year in a row now that all the bars agreed to shut down at midnight. And that is phenomenal. There's nothing good happened after midnight at Music Fest, so that's it.
Thanks. And it was, it was nice to the, to see the guys and the bikes going by. I, I don't know. That was the county. I thought I saw the. Yeah.
There were several from the, the EMS.
Yeah, no, I only saw the, saw your guys, yeah.
And I'm hopefully hiring in the near future. We have two open spots and. Have a lateral candidate and two people on our list, so we'll be doing interviews over the next few days.
Thanks, Shane. Dave?
Unfortunately, the last board meeting, I didn't get a chance to talk on Zoom for some reason.
Yeah, we heard you. We heard you loud and clear.
Somebody shut me off. Uh, yeah, so I just had to report quite a bit on these Fillmore Bridge. As you noticed, the uh budget transfer we did tonight. Um, the two-lane road that the village needed our assistance in building is totally a hundred percent complete. Tomorrow, we're gonna be resetting the manhole and that job's over. I, I'm gonna be working with NISAG in the next few weeks to move the power off of that road. Uh, we gotta move telephone poles. Off of Fillmore and put in some new ones on Warren, because we have to do a new loop to bypass. Uh, that's the good news. So the town highways role is totally done on East Fillmore, waiting for the bridge contractor. But the bad news is, as you know, we hired an archaeologist to come in from Binghamton to do the report for Shippo. Um, as we guessed, there is no historic. Value, but it's stuck in DOT and Albany still, so we're not moving. Um. We're gonna give it one more week, but if it doesn't. Get through it within a week, we're gonna have to postpone that bridge till next year. We just can't get it done this year. Just too many uh. Delays, uh, even if we did bid it, it's coming down to where the manufacturer won't be able to build it. So within a week, we're gonna have to make a decision. Um, doesn't really affect a lot. Most of the residents already know and are actually happy because they don't like the bridge anyway. Um, but uh because of the delays that we've had, it's just not looking good this year, so.
For church.
No, this is for Fillmore. Church, we haven't even gotten to yet. Church, we had already planned on doing next year because of delays with uh easements that we had to do. This is Fillmore, Fillmore.
I didn't realize there was historic issues with Fillmore too.
No, it's, it doesn't. It's because it's a joint Bridge New York project. It has to go through that. Process for both at the same time, so it's not a matter of that we don't have everything done. It's just taken too long. And even.
I'm sorry, go on.
Yeah, so even if in a week we did get the approval, you'd have to, what's the timeline, Martha? You'd be lucky to get that out to bid. Maybe till the end of August and then, you know, you'd have to manufacture it. As you know, our construction season is just too small, so. It it's just not looking good. Um.
What are they looking for? It's, it's a historic, we archaeologists.
So what it is, is uh, there's some map in the village that shows where it's potentially historic neighborhoods. And the Church Street corridor was in that. So even though the houses were built and I think they are average around nineteen twenty through that area. It forced it to go through this process. And they required us to go with an archaeologist from SUNY Binghamton is who we hired. To do a study on those houses. The archaeologist confirmed that there's no. Historic problem, so that now got shipped to DOT and we're just waiting for DOT to accept that.
But that is also impacting Fillmore.
Because it's the same Bridge New York.
Okay.
Grant. They, they both were put together and it's just. You know, we were already delayed early in the year with the village waiting to decide on, and it just compounded, so. It's not really a big. Problem construction wise. I mean, costs could go up with inflation, but we're looking still good on the. Numbers to still come in. And as you see with what the highway did, that was estimated at a hundred thousand to build that two-lane road. We did it for under fifteen grand. Within budget, so it just takes time. Unlike when we built these bridges ourselves, we didn't have all these regulations. We just rolled and within months we had them done. But there's nothing you can do with Albany. You just gotta wait for the process. And like I said, the the manufacturer now is where the problem is. If if for one thing, even if you got it going, it takes months for that concrete to cure. It it it's just running out of time. And honestly, if I was a contractor, I wouldn't want to put it in November. We did that in St. John Grove and it's not fun working in the creek in November. So probably these will both end up getting bid together and it'll probably be a joint project now. Not sure yet, but it'll probably get awarded to one contractor and they'll just hit both of them next year. Sorry, you know, it's.
Speed of government.
Yeah, it it's, it's just part of the game. Uh, but again, most of the residents know, um, when we officially do decide that, I'll make sure we put a flyer door to door. Not one of them are complaining. They're all like, oh, great.
On your control.
They like the the road closed now, so. It'll, it'll be hard for the DPW, but I've talked to them just for plowing. It'll be a little hard for them, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks, Liz.
A couple of things with the Rural Outreach Center. Uh, the prior uh board had approved the site plan for that project. Which included an accessory building. Um, they are getting close to finalizing the plans for that, so. Construction of that should begin um before the end of the summer. Um, it's a pole barn though, so it'll go through pretty quickly. Um, and hopefully there'll be minimal uh disruption to the neighborhood. Again, the construction constraints will still roll through with. Um, and hopefully there'll be minimal uh disruption to the neighborhood. Again, the construction constraints will still roll through with that. Project as well. Um, and then uh regrettably, today we received Jen Calkins um resignation. She'll be with us through the end of June, um, but we'll be looking for a new clerk for the department. And we'll get that posted um as quickly as possible because um that's just a couple of weeks from now. So, that's all I have.
Thanks. All right, a motion to approve the abstract.
So moved.
Wait a second. Take my look. Any discussion? On the favor?
I.
I opposed. And a motion to adjourn. No one wants to leave?
So moved. Spaced out.
All in favor?
I.